Right, we're just getting the Zoom going here. All right, the time is now seven o'clock. We're gonna call tonight's meeting the Lunenburg Select Board to Order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. None or items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Uh, we're gonna call at this time for any public comments this evening from the board.
I have none.
I also have none.
All right, seeing none, to the town manager.
Yes, I would like to, not the board, but before the public goes.
Sure.
I would like to read the press release that was issued today in response to related items to the fiscal twenty-three real estate taxes. On January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, the Select Board voted to initiate investigation as authorized by Section three dash two E of the Lunenburg Town Charter into the process that contributed to the fiscal twenty-three property valuation and tax assessments. During this process, the date the tax bills were mailed was investigated due to reports it may have been mailed after December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Due to documentation from the Postal Service that contradicts the affidavit of mailing from the company that handles the mailing of the town's tax bills and their associated postage statements, had been determined that there was enough doubt for town officials to determine that tax bills may have been mailed after December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Based on this information has been determined the town will rely on the Postal Service data processing, January sixth, two thousand twenty-three, as the date of mailing for the third and fourth quarter tax bills. Following this determination and per Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section fifty-seven C, the due date for the third and fourth quarter tax bills will be May first, two thousand twenty-three, and no interest is due on third quarter taxes between the period of February first, two thousand twenty-three, and May first, two thousand twenty-three. The tax collector will be adjusting any interest amounts where interest paid on tax payments that were made after the original February first, two thousand twenty-three deadline. Any interest on third quarter tax bills paid after February first, two thousand twenty-three will be applied as a partial payment towards the fourth quarter tax payments. If both the third and fourth quarters have been paid and the adjustment of interest results in an overpayment based on the total amount due for the fiscal year, the Collector's Office will initiate refunds after June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. If you have any questions related to your fiscal twenty-three property tax bills, please contact the Tax Collector's Office at nine seven eight five eight two four one three zero, extension two. Under Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section fifty-nine, the Lunenburg Board of Assessors has voted that based on the reliance of a tax bill mailing that is later than December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, the deadline for anyone who has not already submitted a tax abatement application is now May first, two thousand twenty-three. Tax abatement applications can be found on the town website, and the address is provided in in this press release. For anyone who has previously submitted a tax abatement application to the Board of Assessors and is approaching the ninety-day deadline, the Assessor's Office has mailed out extension form letters. The Board of Assessors and the consultant the town has hired to assist the town in conducting all the necessary inspections and valuation recommendations to the Board of Assessors is making all efforts to meet the ninety-day deadline from the date the applicant filed the tax abatement request to the assessors. But due to the sheer volume of applications, applications may require an extension in order not to be deemed denied. Written consent from property owners is required for extensions, and the length of the extension is at the discretion of the property owner. The property owner also has the right to request more than one extension if the length of the first extension is not sufficient. Extension forms can be found on the town website, and the address is provided in the press release. Again, questions related to tax bill amounts, due or interest amounts adjustments should be directed to the Tax Collector's Office at nine seven eight five eight two four one three zero, extension two, and questions related to filing an abatement and extension requests should be directed to the Assessor's Office at nine seven eight five eight two four one three zero, extension five.
Thank you, Heather. All right, do we have any public comments this evening from the public? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any announcements this evening?
I do have also a public comment, if I can.
Of course.
But I'm not connecting right now, so I'll wait till later.
Well, we can always come back. All right, I'm not aware of any communications from the boards, are you? No? Okay. All right, so we're gonna go to our appointment, the first appointment this evening. Uh, it's gonna be with PJ Keating. It's an amendment to Earth Removal Permit Number sixteen and discuss future development of the land involving the current earth removal permits. So the representatives from PJ Keating, please step forward, and you just wanna just briefly review the nature of your application for us today, what you're looking for us to do.
Rob Robinson from PJ Keating, VP of Aggregates. The parcel that, uh, so if you want to ask some questions about whatever it is on this, on the parcel, um, that would be great.
Yeah, what'd be helpful is if you just do kind of just a brief overview, you know, one-minute overview of what you're asking us for. We have all the information in front of us.
You have all the information, okay. So I represent PJ Keating, but this parcel that went through was from Keating Land Holdings or Keating, um, so, uh, the the actual owner of PJ Keating, so it's two different, um, individual, two different companies as such. So we have the permit on there, and the land was sold through PJ Keating, uh, the owner of Keating, which is separate to our company. So if that kind of explains that part of it around. So the the parcel that went through for the building of the, um, of the distribution center, that that went through, and we are gonna remove that from our permit. So we're looking to take that section out. I think it's between eight to thirteen acres approximately. And you have the, I see you have the Asbils here as well, so we're looking to take that out of the of the actual permit, but keep the surrounding permit in place.
Okay.
And that's what we're looking at doing.
Okay, so I'm gonna summarize your request. So, um, basically some land was sold for the distribution center. That land had a earth removal permit on it.
Correct.
What you're looking to do is maintain that permit on the area that was not sold.
Correct.
Is that a correct summary?
That's it.
Okay, do we have any questions, comments from the board? And I will also ask if any of butters are in attendance, if anyone wants to have any comments, with any questions from the, or comments from the board.
I have none, unless it's not as straightforward as it sounds. It sounds pretty straightforward to me, but.
Know that we have, I know we have a letter from the Land Use Director, basically summarizing as you just did, Mr. Chair. It looks pretty straightforward. Uh, they're saying it's about thirty-four acres and his, whatever the acreage is, it's.
I just looked at the the actual footprint of the building, that's all. So you've got the actual full acreage of their of their plot.
Right, so I'm just saying what the land director says. I mean, it's whatever, whatever the land that was sold, you're just looking to take off the permit, which sounds reasonable, and they're looking for that we accept the site plan as approved by the planning board as an adequate closure plan for that land that being removed, since it is a approved project and has been inspected. I would assume that we would indeed accept that as a closure plan. I, as one member, certainly do. I, I'm sure you guys do as well. So yeah, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. All right, do we have any butters in attendance that would like to speak to this, um, in person or in Zoom? Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we, uh, amend the Earth Removal Permit Number sixteen as presented by removing the land that was sold for the Lunenburg Warehouse, uh, from, uh, Permit Number sixteen, keeping the remainder of the property under the Earth Removal Plan.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any additional discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Sam Neil. All right. We're gonna move into our next appointment. Uh, we're meeting with the Municipal Aggregation Broker Colonial Power Group. I assume that's the gentlemen that are with us in the suits regarding municipal aggregation rate amendment due to clean energy standard expansion.
Good evening, Mark Capitoni, Colonial Power.
Good evening.
Five Mount Royal Ave, Marlborough, Mass. Uh, I'm here to talk to you tonight about a small increase coming to the municipal aggregation program. So back in two thousand and twenty-two, it actually started in two thousand and twenty. The Department of Environmental Protections, DEP, opened a docket to, uh, expand the clean energy standard, and in doing so, they finally implemented that, uh, that the increased renewables. And in doing so, it invoked, we asked that the grandfathering contracts that were there. Unfortunately, they shot that all down because they're looking to expand as much as, as much renewables as they possibly can. And that, with them passing that, required the suppliers to go back in in time and and actually get hit since January of two thousand twenty-two. So what you're seeing as an increase, and just so everyone knows, uh, the rate right now is eleven seven four. It will be going up to eleven eight six eight, which is an increase of point zero zero one two eight. So per customer, people will be looking at an impact of about seventy. Department of Public Utilities asked us to use six hundred kilowatts per customer, so if you take that point zero zero two eight, uh, one two eight, excuse me, you get about seventy cents, uh, seventy-seven cents per customer per month. That's what we're looking at, the increase. I'm here to answer any questions you might have about the clean energy standard, uh, the increase. If you wouldn't mind just two seconds, I just wanted, because there's some really good news here for you to hear. It's your decisions that allow this to happen, so the current rate that the city with the increase would be at eleven eight six eight. Unitil, their rate right now is at twenty-one four two nine, so about fifty cents on the dollar the town of Lunenburg is paying. And, uh, the city of Fitchburg just started their own aggregation, and their rate, uh, right through December of twenty-four, like yours, is seventeen two six eight. So lots of people across the state have been, um, bearing a heavy burden, but your, your, your vision and foresight has allowed Lunenburg to lock in rates that are just, you you can't get them today. So I just wanted to commend the, um, the the board for their decisions to move forward. But I'm here to answer any questions you might have on this clean energy standard and the expansion.
All right, uh, to the board, do you have any questions for the?
I do not. All I want to say is it's been really great working with your company and getting these and, and, you know, securing these has been a partnership that has been very productive for our residents, and we appreciate that going forward.
Right back at you.
All right, um, I, my first question is just on, uh, the makeup of where the power comes from. What percentage of the power is from renewable sources of energy?
So now, starting in twenty twenty-three, the renewables that, and they're playing a little bit of a game, but required under the standard right now in twenty twenty-three is fifty-nine point two percent is a meets, it's a basic service product. That's how much renewables you need to have in your, um, in your mix.
Okay, so roughly, roughly sixty percent of the power that's coming into town is coming from renewable sources of energy?
So I just.
Or will be.
Yeah, I'm just saying to you, so to get technical, we're gonna get mix, and then we have to buy renewable energy certificates to match fifty-nine percent.
Got it. Okay. And then my next question is a little, little unrelated, but, you know, when it comes to these unitile rates, as far as distribution, which is almost double what we're paying for the actual supply, do you see that generally across the Commonwealth?
Believe it or not, it, they're, they're higher than than everyone else's, but it's, it's not, it's not that outrageous of a price as compared to, so right now, National Grid's basic service rate is thirty-three eight nine one. So there are people liberally bordering here that are paying triple what you're paying for electricity, just the power portion. Never mind, on top of that, they have the distribution piece.
Okay. Okay, um, I do wanna, uh, just, if anyone in the room has any questions, I know this has an impact on the entire community. Just wanted to see if anyone, if there's any public questions, uh, tonight, from anyone?
No one on Zoom.
Okay, what is the action that we're looking for tonight?
This was informational.
Okay, so no action for us to take, and when is this going to effect?
This is going into effect with the main meter reads. They will actually see it on their June bill.
Okay.
They'll have to be looking, sir.
Okay.
They'll have to be looking.
Yep, and we post, um, provided by our broker, all the notices, uh, on the town website, so, and they're very good about getting that information to us.
Yeah.
In advance. And on our website.
Came in with our, with, I saw it in my unitil bill, it came the announcement too, I think. They they put in a.
About the clean energy standard, yes.
Okay, well, this has been really informative, and, uh, thank you for giving us this insight into, um, into this increase. You know, I know that seventy, and, you know, I just got the highest unitil bill I've ever gotten. It was seven hundred and forty-eight dollars, and it's two people in my house, two. And so I had to look into what happened, and basically, when it was really cold that weekend, we plugged a space heater in, in the basement, and forgot it was on. And, uh.
It's been running since?
It was, yeah, it ran for almost a month, so. Yep, so I got an outrageous bill because of that, and we did that to save money off the oil bill, and now it's awful, awful. But no, I want to thank you, though, for coming forward. This is definitely to the benefit of our residents, and seventy-seven cents a month. We average less than six hundred kilowatts generally. I'm usually like four twenty, so it is, it is, you know, definitely, I think, understandable. This is an affordable increase, and and I think we get why it's happening.
I'm happy to come out anytime you need to talk about Muni Act.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
You could potentially ask one totally unrelated question, because this is the second, we have had two appointments. This is the second group in a row that brought two people, but only can only convince one person to come up to the microphone. So I don't know if this is a trend today.
Well, I'm just here, in case we had any difficult questions.
Thank you for coming, Joseph.
Thank you.
I thought he was the muscle. Geez, things get wild, you know?
How we're getting even?
All right, so let's go ahead and, um, we're moving forward. I know that the members of the Parks Commissions watch our meetings, so hopefully they're making their way this direction. All right, so we have a meeting with the Fire Chief to go over a brief presentation on the, um, Fire Chief also functions as our Emergency Management Director, uh, to go over just an update on the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. Chief Sully, always good to see you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, again, we did a major update to the plan back in last May that you folks signed off on. Since that time, we had another smaller update to it. To go back, the town had gotten support from the Collins Center to develop a continuity of operations plan for a major disaster. We started that in January of two thousand twenty. Like a lot of other things in life, that went off the rails fairly quickly a few months later. Uh, after we had developed this plan, they reached back out to us after we hadn't heard from them in a while. We reconnected, developed that plan, and their suggestion was to add that plan into the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. So that's what we did. That's now, uh, Section twenty-one added in there to basically just develop a plan for if something affected a lot of department heads, management personnel, how we would keep things operating in town, what the the chains are through each department, stuff like that. We also added a little bit of language in the the sheltering section that they suggested, uh, added that in, and made a, I, on the update page, Section three, there's a couple of typos that I found in there that I updated, uh, and changed that. And again, like any other document, it's a living document, so we'll be looking to move forward on some other things on that, uh, going forward. But in a nutshell, that's about it.
All right.
Anybody has any questions?
No, you know, it's a really comprehensive plan. Thank you for having it to us in advance. Do you have any questions, comments from the members of the board?
None.
I do not. I am comfortable with the changes in the plan.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have to accept this?
You have to vote on it.
I would move that we accept the changes to the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan as just presented by the Fire Chief and Emergency Management Director, Patrick Sullivan.
Second.
Okay, any additional discussion? As all, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm liking this agenda.
Yeah.
Don't.
The goal. All right. All right, I know when you look at it.
This could go off the rails right here, this, this one.
Yeah.
No.
All right, so we're gonna go ahead and jump in our agenda this evening to our interviews, appointments, reappointments, and resignations. Um, so let's, um, go ahead to our appointment to the ag comm. Were we, do we send an invitation for them to attend? I don't know if it's necessary.
Entire commission?
No, no, for Ashley York.
Yes.
Oh. In attendance, look at that. Ashley, if you wouldn't mind coming forward. So if you would, if you'll come forward and just state your name and address and your interest in the Agricultural Commission.
Bring this down a smidge.
All right.
Hello there, my name's Ashley York Aronovich. I live on seventy Pratt Street, Lunenburg. I've been a resident for two years now. Uh, my interest in agriculture, um, well, has, it goes back a long ways. However, I wasn't able to put it forth in the the last place I was living, because I hail from a city. And we found Lunenburg, and what really drew us to it was the right to farm, the fact that it's a right-to-farm community, and you guys seem to be doing very well with the conservation land and everything, and that means a lot to me. So, um, I currently work for a nonprofit, community-owned farm. I'm the market garden manager, and I do all of the produce, production, growing. Um, and I'm really here to help Lunenburg with the farmers' markets and anything else you guys need.
All right, that sounds excellent. Have you had the chance to meet with the Agricultural Commissioners?
I did, last month.
Okay, and how did that go?
It went well. It went well, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I'm, I'm new. I'm the newbie here, so it's, um, always a bit awkward, but it was, it was nice, and they were very welcoming, and I think I'm going to enjoy working with them.
All right, yeah, you know, Matt Allison and I are friends, and he's a really, really good guy.
Yeah, I know. I really like him a lot.
Good, good. Do we have any questions from the board to Ashley?
When you say you're from a city, were you from Gardner? Is that where you're, what city were you from?
Las Vegas, Nevada.
Okay, now that.
So a neighbor, a neighbor, a neighbor in the city.
Yes, I know. I, I wear many hats, but I am happy to be here and call it home.
Well, welcome to Massachusetts. Welcome to New England.
Thank you so very much.
This is your first time? Are you from the west?
I'm actually, I was born in Concord, Massachusetts.
Oh, so welcome home then.
So I, I came home.
Got it.
Yes, my mother was in the Air Force, was out at the Air Force Base in Nevada.
Oh, nice.
And, um, and I learned how to grow food in the desert, so I feel that I'm well-equipped to at least help other people learn how to grow things.
Well, your energy level is obvious, is very apparent, number one. Number two is, people get new coming in, it's the best way, I will tell you, to get to know people and get to know the town. I think you will fit right in, and I think it's a great commission you're joining.
Thank you so much, and that's really what it's all about. I've always wanted to be at the local level and be a part of the team, so here I am.
I'm not sure Vegas can compete with Gardner, Mass, but it's still a shame, you know?
Sister cities, I'm sure.
I think that's true, yes.
No, you have a, you have the, you have the New England presence about yourself, so if you were to tell me you're from the West Coast, I would have been shocked.
I know. I, I try not to tell people that, because I feel a bit of, there's a judgment there, but no. Here I am, in Lunenburg.
We live in twenty twenty-three, there's a judgment everywhere.
On everything, quite, quite literally, yes.
All right, um, yeah, you have great energy. I'm, I'm sure it's gonna be really helpful on the, on the ag comm. Great group of people you're gonna be joining anyway. Um, so this appointment is until, let me just verify, the end of this June.
Correct.
So we will be doing our regular, uh, appointments that will be happening, um, and so you will likely need to submit a reappointment application. Uh, that's gonna need to probably get in like right away.
A month.
Yeah, so, yeah, it has to be by the end of the month, uh, end of next month, so just make sure you check in with Elaine on that.
No problem.
All right.
Nobody scares you off in the month, so you actually come before us for a reappointment.
No, I will be here.
Okay, good.
I'm here, don't worry about that.
All right, is there a motion to appoint?
I move to appoint Ashley York Aronovich to the Agricultural Commission term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, those opposed, no. All right, so first, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
So, um, the next step for you is to check with the town clerk. You have to get sworn in, and then also check in with Elaine. So we recently updated our appointment policy. You wanna just read it over. Uh, there's some really good information in there, and that kind of gives you some guidance on how to just get started.
Perfect.
All right, thank you so much for coming forward.
Thank you guys so much. It's good to see you in person.
Good seeing you.
All right.
Congratulations.
Okay, next, we have our ratification of the town. We have two ratifications of the town manager's appointments for heavy equipment and then also public access. So to the town manager, if you can present both of these, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the first appointment I'll discuss is the Heavy Equipment Operator. So Alexander Page is who I appointed, and I'm asking the board to ratify tonight. Alex is a resident of Lunenburg, and he comes to us from the town of Boxborough, where he worked as a skilled laborer for about a year and a half. Prior to that, his relatable experience was with the town of Harvard, where he worked for a year as a truck driver laborer. He was a graduate of Monty Tech from their automotive program. And he comes fully licensed and with excellent recommendations. The responses to his reference checks were that he has a great work ethic, motivated, positive attitude, quick learner, and is a worker. Alex is eager to join our team, and just as much as we are excited for him to fill the last vacancy with the DPW for the Heavy Equipment Operator position.
So you freed your, you freed yourself from the jinx. You even said it out loud. I'm so glad.
I'm gonna knock three times, yes. The second appointment asking the board to ratify is Eric Foster as the Production Technician. Eric is currently a videographer for public access, and he is being recommended to be promoted to the Production Technician position because of his knowledge and experience in video production. The PAC manager described him as an expert trainer in having keen camera skills. Eric has experience with the program server and the videographer meeting procedures. He also lives locally, so he's available as situations arise, which they sometimes do, uh, with our server, different meeting, uh, programming.
Okay. All right, so we can take this as individual motions or a joint motion, either is fine.
I feel like it's time for me to make a motion. I haven't made a motion yet tonight. I move to ratify that, let me not screw this up. I'm, I move to ratify the town manager's appointment of Alex Page to the position of Heavy Equipment Operator.
Second.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, as many of you are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, those opposed, no. All right, the motion passes.
Maximize your time, Lou.
All right. I move to ratify the town manager's appointment of Eric Foster to the position of, uh, Public Access Production Technician.
Second.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, as many of you are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Then you have another update for us.
Yes, um, just an announcement of the resignation of the Building Commissioner, Casey Burlingame. Uh, so he gave his resignation about two weeks ago. His last day will be this, end of this week.
Okay.
And we have, we covered by an assistant? Do we, does he have an assistant?
Uh, we do have an alternate that, um, the Land Use Director already contacted, and we'll be able to, uh, fill in off hours, because he works for the town of Townsend. Uh, but we have advertised for the position already and are starting to get applications, so we'll try to fill this as quickly as possible.
Okay. So Ms. Lockwood, when you are ready, let us know. We're gonna keep going through the agenda here, because we do have an appointment at eight o'clock, and we're thirty minutes early. Do you, we can, we can come to you in five more minutes then? Okay. All right, let's do our warrants now. Let's just get through these. We have a county's payroll warrant, the amount of six hundred eighty-one thousand, five hundred seventy dollars and nine cents. We have a. We have a payroll deductions warrant in the amount of six hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty-one cents. We have a payroll warrant in the amount of nine hundred seventy-five thousand, four hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty-six cents. Let's see. Do we have any minutes to approve? Oh, recall. No. Nope. All right. Do we have any action items this evening?
I have none.
Okay. Neither do I. Committee reports.
Fincom met Thursday, last Thursday. Basically took votes on the rest of their warrant articles that had a financial impact. So they have addressed most of those. I was very happy that the senior tax relief got an affirmative vote of recommendation of approval. They did have questions. At the end, there was a discussion and it may be a continuing discussion at their next meeting regarding the amount of money being put aside for abatements this year, whether that, whether this will have a ripple effect into next year or not. Mr. Chair, you and I got, I think, an email from Chris Menard from the Finance Committee. I did have a conversation, a phone conversation with him and told him my personal view, but I did not think it would in the future, but I don't know if you had one with him or not, or any correspondence.
I did not.
So that was the, the crux of that meeting. Otherwise, everything else was just voting on warrant and getting ready.
Okay.
Okay, so this is regarding the council on aging. Both the town manager and I were at that meeting this morning and I was anticipating that the town manager's report was gonna be before this, so I don't know what she was planning on covering. So I'll hit these in very skeletal fashion. So we did have a, the council on aging had a visit from the facilities director, Chris Ruth, today to discuss various projects relative to the buildings and grounds over there. So I believe there were five projects. The kitchen rehab, patio, generator, the additional parking. And I don't even know what the hot water situation was. I didn't quite get that. What was the hot water situation in the kitchen?
There is not a consistent feed of hot water into the kitchen. So looking to solve that issue.
Okay. And were you planning on hitting some of these in your?
Yeah, they'll be covered mostly in my capital plan updates.
Oh, okay. All right. So I'm not gonna, I, I, I think I said, okay, so I presented an update on, on the senior tax relief and that it's going to be a warrant article and outlined for all those in attendance sort of what the qualifications and the criteria are and all of that. Sort of, sort of a mini outline of the, you know, relative to what I gave it, to what we gave at the Finance Committee meeting. There will be a COVID clinic on Friday, one to three. Okay. And I missed a little bit of that.
What happens at a COVID clinic?
Yeah, it's a boosters, for boosters. Yes.
Vaccines.
They just chat about COVID.
Talk about things, COVID, COVID stories, COVID anecdotes.
How soon we forget COVID clinics? It was a hot term.
Yeah, that's right.
People were waiting for that.
And is there, I, this is, so sometimes I don't hear everything. So was there some sort of incentive plan with that?
There, so the, the state was providing gift cards as part of a program that was, they had leftover gift cards that they were gonna give as part of incentives. But they don't know what they are, what kind of gift cards they are. There was no description.
Okay.
Quite the incentive.
Yes. Mystery gift cards, yes.
Mystery gift cards.
The clothing drive, Eagle House supporters in conjunction with the Epilepsy Foundation, that drive is still going on.
When, when is the collection for that?
It's Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Final collection or?
No, no, collection. Because I had, I couldn't make it. I knew it was on Tuesday. I have some, some bags to bring.
I think it's Tuesday, Thursday, ten to noon.
Ten to noon, I believe, yeah.
Okay. So Thursday, ten to noon. Okay. I gotta make sure. Okay. Otherwise, you're gonna stay in my house for another week. I'm trying to.
So the last time I updated, a month ago, they, they were, I believe, six hundred bags they had collected. And they are now at seven hundred ninety-two bags. And also, on April twenty-eighth, there will be trucks coming to pick up those bags and they are seeking volunteers to sort of help load those onto the trucks or bring those from Passios to the trucks. And I, that's it. That's what I have for an update. I mean a committee report, that is.
So just to add on to that, April twenty-eighth is the final date. That's when they're
Yeah. All right. So I got, Thursday, I gotta do. That's it.
Okay. My brief, so as we know, the select board takes the student initiative that Mr. Franco and I work on each year. So we had the wonderful opportunity
Forgot about that.
On Friday to meet with some eighth grade classes and go over kinda local government and how local government is structured and how it operates. It was, you know, really, I will say this year, after doing it last year, I think we had a better plan this year. And the energy level was, was, was higher on my part for sure than it was last year. And of course, Mr. Franco is always energetic. So it was a really, I thought it was a really good initiative. It went, I thought, very well. Students seemed to be really engaged in it and, and I think they got a lot out of it. And then afterwards, I briefly met with the superintendent just broadly and the chair of the school committee on just, just to get updated on other initiatives that they're taking within the district. They just wanna kinda keep me in the loop on some of that. And then library trustees, so they do have a request for us. It's related to the funds of the library trustees. I know that's being worked on with Mylene and Karen. But as soon as we can get them an update, they will appreciate that. And then I have just a question for you about the overlay, which we could probably talk about in that section, but question was, can we reallocate? So if too much money, if, if, if funds are allocated at the overlay account related to abatements and not all those funds are needed, can town meeting pull those funds back out of the overlay for free cash or other purposes?
No, the assessors, the board of assessors has to release those excess. It's a request that's made. We ask them to release funds. They take a vote and release the funds.
Got it.
And they get, they could get re-appropriated at a future town meeting after that.
Perfect. Okay. That's helpful to know. And that's all that I have for committee report related. Perfect. All right. We're gonna come back to our appointment with the parks commissioners on funding plan and ARPA funding request. I'm not sure if you have a quorum and if you wanna call your meeting to order or not. I don't know if you guys posted.
Yes, we did. Good evening.
Good evening.
We do have a quorum, so I'd like to call the Parks Commission meeting to order. And here present
Hey Karen.
is seven thirty-eight and we have our member Dave Passios, Karen Menard, and I, and I, Anna Lockwood, the chair. Heather, can you open the file?
Yes.
I think it should be the same link and it should be updated to the current. I know in the past, it had, go ahead.
I used what was last sent the other day.
The one that I sent to this morning that you applied. It should be the same file.
Okay. Because I grabbed the file from Sunday.
Someone replied it last night.
What time is, I don't think there's a link associated, okay.
Got it? Okay. So some of the information we're gonna see today is information that was presented at town meeting, especially the part that was from grants. Of course, it was updated to the most current information. So ARPA funds and the success of the Marshall Park renovation is what I call this presentation. When I was here back in December and you, this board was talking about the ARPA funds and what it would take for you to make the decisions, there were three questions that you asked, was how far will ARPA funds get the project? The sources of funding for the remainder of the project and grant information and deadlines. So that's the goal of the presentation. So source of funding is going to be a combination of public and private grants. The two large public grants are the Park Fund, which is a state, and also the Land and Water Conservation Fund. The private grants are the ARP and there is also another one, Staten Foundation, that they, they give up to a hundred percent on a dog park. ARPA funds, which is what we are here for, so. And the town manager and I have worked over the past month or so, and that's what has delayed my presence here, figuring out what would be the best way to fund through, how we could fund it through town. And based on the total debt and outstanding debt for, under the general fund, we believe that we can fund it under the general fund that levy. And on the next page, that way. So our policy for general, general fund regular debt is four percent of the regular debt to the levy. And that's right now, that little annex that you have, the colored page.
Just, just for people at home, when you're saying our policy, you're referring to the town's policy, not the parks commission policy.
Right, right.
Okay. I just wanna be clear.
I just embody the town. That's it.
I just wanna be clear for people who are listening, that's all.
Right, right. And the amendment that I, the little paper that's, I'll color for you guys, it shows us where we are today. Today, you are at one point two-two percent of the, of that four percent cap for FY twenty-three. That number will keep going down over the next few years. And once we add Marshall Park, the last three columns there, or three rows, gives you that perspective with what would that be the impact of Marshall Park on both the, on the regular, regular debt service and, and on the aggregate. And the number that I have on the presentation is actually if we were to fund that today, with today's revenue. So if it was today, funded today with today revenues, it would be one point six-eight percent under the, for, for the regular debt. For the aggregate would mean one point five-three percent. And that is if we were to be funding the whole project, the five point two. So anything that we get outside to help us fund that is just going to reduce that percentage. And from what I heard from town manager, this is something that I worked with her, it's, it, it seems to be a number that we can work with. Any questions on that? No? Okay. So the next slide is the cost, I called it the cost timeline. I'm not sure that's a real term, but it made sense in my head as I was working on this. So it gives us a breakdown of the whole project in terms of if it was a cost. So the conceptual design has been paid. It was thirty-six thousand. The property survey has already been paid and is about eighteen thousand dollars. I don't have the exact number of the invoice. I'm sure Heather does. The schematic design, we just got that kicked off. It has been funded. It was funded in the last town meeting. That's going to come up about forty-five thousand. We got a rough estimate for the next phase from the group that's giving, doing this work. They said it'll probably be about the same amount, which would be fifty thousand. That means we have enough funds. There will be another phase in between, which is the bidding and bid management. That's not quoted here, but we should have enough funds from what was funded last time, the fall town meeting. Then we started the construction phase. The last part of the presentation is the breakdown of the phases and what they are. But the way it was conceptualized, the first phase would be cost about three point three million and that's the bulk of the construction. That's where we are going to build a pavilion, the two big ball courts, the basketball court, it'll create the playground and the biggest part of the, the parking, which will be the entrance of Mass Ave. And also within pavilion will be the bathrooms. The second phase would be the ninety-foot diamond along with the softball field and that's one point five million dollars. And the third phase would be the dog park with the walk, the path that's going to go through the woods all the way through Marshall Pond with the overlook. The last little phase, it'll be the little overlook by, on Highland Street, we, kind of like a little pocket park there. And that's estimated as eighty-six thousand. As we go through the schematic design and start doing the engineering, these phases might get shifted around a little bit based on what's the best decision for engineering. So the next thing, the next slide is we, when we put in our request for ARPA funds, we did request two million. So I'm going to, I just needed to illustrate something and I chose that number that, as a commission, we had talked about it. So bear me with that. So the, it's a quick slide. So if ARPA funds, two millions awarded to this project, it'll give us about two-thirds of the first phase. However, if you go into the next slide, if we add the ARPA funds plus the grants, the majority of the grants that we have looked at it are matching grants. So we need to have a dollar for dollar. We need to be able to tell them, we have this money that is ready to jump in. That's how both of those larger grants operate. If we don't have that money, we will need to, once they're awarded to us, we'll need to go back to town and request more funds. We used both of those grants when we bought the Saliba property a few years back. And we used both for, we bought the Saliba property and also a park property there. And I don't remember the total of that investment. I think it was close to a million.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought it was eight ninety-two or something like that.
Yeah, that's about right.
And do you recall how much was their match? Was it a?
It was, I thought, four hundred for one and a hundred for the other, maybe.
Okay. So they matched about fifty percent. Okay. So that dollar that, for each dollar that you award to this project, we're hoping to make two dollars with the funds and the grants and the matching grants. Now, the next slide is that best case scenario is we have that two million dollars from ARPA. We get the two million dollars in grants. We are, we are commissioned who are working really hard for that. I can elaborate a little bit on that. If that's the case, the total cost for the town would be one point three million. We would be seeking, we would only need one point one million on, for funding and borrowing. So going back to that first slide, you know, what it used to be one point five, one point five percent, now it's going to be really a third of, a fifth of that. So it'd be even smaller project for the town. The one point three, the difference there is the two hundred thousand that has already been funded. So it's the cost of the town. The next slide, it kinda gives us the other picture, which is, you know, if we are given one million dollars of ARPA funds towards this project, what does that look like? And we'll be able to then get, you know, we'll still apply for the grants, but the buck, the dollar-for-dollar match is going to be smaller.
I have a question on this one.
Go for it.
So we talked about money from borrowing. If the town moves to borrow some money, can't that money also be used to help match grants?
It can. And I will address that in a minute.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's just the scenarios for the grants, for that. So the next slide, which is the, you know, two million ARPA funds, what it means. It demonstrates the community support for the strongest grant application, applications. With that, it minimize, it maximizes the grants opportunity with a dollar-for-dollar match. It reduces the borrowing and the breaking, and the break ground on the project, hopefully next year, especially with the ARPA. And the other thing that it does is when we come to town meeting next time, we can come with a full picture. We have the, we have maximized the funds, they're matching funds. This is exactly is going to be the bill for the town. There is no guessing. If we don't have that full picture, we'll be coming to town meeting with a different story, which will be, hey, we got a million from town, from, ARPA was funded. We got another million from matching funds. We got another million from matching funds, there's another million that we can try to go for it, but we need you to fund us for $4 million so that we can go and do this work. So it just changed the narrative in town meeting and what we have to do. It could be that instead of one, one meeting, we might be needing to do two town meetings. So the, the success of the project just really, it just adds one more variable there. And that's where I think the ARPA fund can really help us, you know, lock in how we can be successful by giving it the town a really good picture and doing all the work that we need to do before we come to the town for more money. The next slide, I'll be happy to go through it, you guys can look at, but is the detailed grant information. And it talks about too, what makes a grant funding application attractive. Saying that you already have the funds is, makes it very attractive. The project merits, the project readiness, the community support, and having an open space recreation plan. That's a requirement that I cannot emphasize enough because it's a lot of work, and the people that do it should get a lot of credit for it. And the grants available are the Land and Water Conservation Fund, that's up to $1 million. The PARK, which stands for Parkland Acquisition Renovations for Communities, and that's up to $400,000. The ARP, Community Challenge. All of those have the timeline, and there is a typo there. The ADA grant, the, and then the Masterills Grant, which we just missed, the Staten and the USDA Loans and Grants. So that, those are the bulk of the, of the grants that we've seen so far. And, and we, we can go through the next phase, but I just put that in more as information, you guys hadn't requested that. What is the phases and the costs? If you want to go through it, it's just four slides for the public's sake. Okay. So Phase 1 is the one that's slated to be $3.3 million. And it, it'll be the parking lot at the entrance of Mass Ave, the pavilion with the bathrooms, the playground, three pickleball courts, and the basketball court. The Phase 2 is the softball field, the 90-foot diamond, which, if you ask the high school baseball players, they'll be very excited about that. We don't have a great baseball field right now for our high school. And then Phase 3 is the little dog park along with the walk, walking path to the pond. And Phase 4 is the little pocket park by Highland. And again, those phases might change a little bit, depends on what happens during the engineering phase. So that's what we got. So what do you got for us?
To the board.
Couple of quick things. Thank you for the presentation, by the way. These cost projections, now, so groundbreaking would be within the next calendar year. What would be the sort of schedule for all four phases? What I'm getting at is, is are there assumptions built in for increased costs of these services and materials and all of that?
There was this, these, that cost analysis was done early on, on the process. There is another cost analysis that happens during the engineering phase. But she did give us the middle price of, so whenever they, they, people doing these, that's what they do for a living. So she chose the middle price plus an adjusted percentage of, I think, of 5% plus. So there was, the last time we reviewed that with the facilities director, they were comfortable that that is a solid figure.
Okay, so these, these cost projections account for that in some way?
Right.
Sounds like, okay. And also, as far as the grants, and maybe this is what this means here, like the grant availabilities, I'm not sure what slide numbered is, but are these deadlines to, well, are these, do these?
So those are deadlines, those are when the grant application opens.
Okay.
So the next big one is the Park Fund, which, the Parkland, the second one, which is about $400,000. And that will be opening in June. So it's just when they open. The majority of those, we've seen them, I've seen history of them for the past few years.
Okay, thank you.
I will thank you for the presentation. I remain committed to the park.
Thank you.
As far as ARPA funds, there's a lot of questions about when and how and a whole bunch of things. I don't know if this is the time that I could ask some basic things, and most of them are the town managers. What is the current uncommitted funds for ARPA?
Yes, yes.
We're just going through that.
Okay, that's.
2.3 million.
Approximately.
All right, well, again, I'm not, and what are the deadlines for ARPA funds? Committed by?
December 31st, 2024, committed, fully committed.
And spent by December 31st, 2026.
Yes.
Spent, committed, okay. Your, what do you estimate? You said, Britain's calendar year, so just in rough terms, I realize you won't know, and it'll all flesh out as you go along with the project. But what is your estimated groundbreaking? And what is your estimated, as of today, as you're presenting us, projected completion date of all the phases?
So my dream, it would be for groundbreaking next year, probably in the summer after the baseball season is over. And that would give us, you know, in the best-case scenario, give us one more town meeting to go to if we needed funding for that. The construction, I believe, and I, we have had many meetings, but she did, and please help me, didn't she say it would have been about 18 months construction time? Yeah. So the whole construction time, if you're doing without stop, would be about 18 months.
All phases.
All phases. But it is our intent, our hope would be to, when we go out to bid, to be able to bid the whole project and to break it up from that point. And I think that would be really helpful for us, because we're a small town, not a lot of resources. You know, just thinking of Heather and her team and managing that, to be able to bid the whole project, get an OPM and get, you know, even if it's a three-year project or two years, that would be the plan. So I'm thinking, breaking ground 2024 and possibly be done by 2026.
Okay, okay. And lastly, what is the current borrowing rate? I know this is probably a.
So when we worked on the debt schedule projection, I worked with the financial advisor as well. The conservatively 4%, and he said we would likely get less than 4%.
Okay, so let's just say approximately 4%. Okay. All right. Yeah, the reason I ask all these questions is because, you know, a project like this, which has a lot of longevity, is really ripe for borrowing. And ARPA funds, which can be used at any moment, it's like actually money in the bank. And to spend money in the bank when you don't have to, until you get close to the deadlines, we could, we could put the money at, at any point, we could commit to the park. What I want to do is not get in the way of your grant writing, so as things come available. But I also, and I realize you used it as an estimate, but I'll use that as an estimate number back. Like, there's no way I'm going to commit $2 million to, from ARPA fund into, certainly not in the near future, maybe at the end if we don't have anything. But it is ready funds. The other thing, you make a point, and I think it's a very good point, that, about community support. And since ARPA funds aren't in the hands of the community, they're in the hands of five people, that doesn't show necessarily community support, it shows select board support.
I don't know if I agreed with that.
Well, it doesn't, well.
Right, but I hear you.
By a point of mechanics, you don't have to agree with me, it's just a fact. Like, I wasn't putting it out. Like, if we vote, three people vote on this to move the funds, the, you know, the town could go crazy, I guess. But they don't have any, there's no effort.
And we see we are capable of that.
Right, right, yes, yes. We don't want to see that.
We don't want to see that.
I want to see that for the record, I don't want to see that. But I'm just saying, I think, I think for a project of this size, I think it's good to go out to bid. First of all, to take a loan, if we can get it at 4% over, you know, five or 10 years, makes sense anyway, to defray it, to use money elsewhere potentially. Also, it gives a buy-in for the community to say that we're putting up money ourselves, we didn't inherit money, and we're just giving it to this. That's not necessarily, in my way of looking at things, not necessarily community support. So those are the things I'm looking at. I mean, again, I'm very fully committed behind the project, I've been from the beginning, continue to be. And amount of money we're using, you know, obviously, I think we will commit, I as one member will certainly commit certain amount of funds to this at the right time to maximize the grant possibilities, so.
Yeah, and the two big grants, they are, they are coming before next year town meeting. Which is, one is now in June, the other one is going to be in January of 2024. So it opens up, and, and that's the other timeline that we need to work on, because at that point, we're hoping to have the engineering, the complete engineering phase done. But you know, Tom, the other way to also see this is that we are getting the most for our ARPA money, right? You're, you could be giving, again, I'm going to go using the $2 million, because that's what the commission voted. But you know, you have $2 million in ARPA money, and now you're going to get, have four that you're going to be able to use for the committee.
I understand.
But you know, that is the, the thing of, you know, being able to sell this through the community, to say, we have all done our part, you know, being, go out, apply for these grants. It's a lot of work that we all have done, and Heather has seen some of the conversations we have had. And, you know, and be able to go to town meeting and say, hey, we said we were going to do this for grants, and we did it. And this is what the net, the result was. We went for the ARPA, and the select board is also on, you know, on board with this, and this is what they did. And I think that would be a really good story to tell at town meeting, and I think it would just make the project more likely to be successful.
All right. I don't know the mechanics, so first, Anna, thank you for the presentation. Very thorough, excellent cover photo, really engaging and really clear. Clearly, you guys were asking for $2 million, I think this was in here like five times.
Well, it was, it was the number that the commission voted, so I felt like I had to stick with that.
Yep. So, you know, I don't know the mechanics of applying for grants in terms of, you know, you did mention that having the funds already committed certainly helps with the matching grants. But I think for, on, you know, I think we had intended to have our ARPA process wrapped up sooner. I think despite our, you know, two and a half to three and a half hour of meetings all year, that we've obviously been overcome by other, other events. But certainly, this is something that we need to, you know, we need to get back on the, I wouldn't say get back, we just need to have some time to really work through this. But I think that you are in a stronger position, and I don't know if you guys can apply for grants, but if you, you know, I, I think you guys are, would be in a strong position if you had applied, if you apply for a grant, and if they offer and say, hey, but if you can just match us with, you know, $500,000, you know, I think that that becomes something that's easy to digest as a member of this board and kind of a no-brainer, right? Where you can take $500,000 and double that money, you take $1 million, you double that money. You know, I don't, again, I don't know the mechanics of you guys being able to apply for the grants.
So it, that can definitely happen, because that's what happened when the Saliba property hap, was. In this case, it's a, that is, as part of the application asks you, do you have the, do you have the matching funds already? Or, you know, secured, or you need to go get approved or something? That's part of the question of the application. And that does strengthen your, you know, your application. So having, you know, saying, yes, Heather being able to write the letter, we have committed the funds of law for this project. The other thing that's a little different on this is that, unlike buying the property that's once, you know, you buy, construction grants are a little more, they're a little more cautious about it, having that, that money already secured, because they don't want the people, towns to start a project and then not having that money to finish. So they, the, being able, that, having the funds secured is a bigger part of this application than it was for the Saliba property, because it's a construction versus one that you're just buying a piece of land, you either buy or you don't buy it.
Okay.
They don't want the towns to start these projects. The other thing that's very important is that all these grants need to be applied before we start the project. Now, part of the plan that we have is, when we are doing these grant applications with the, and with the engineering, to apply for very specific things, such as, you know, the parking lot, the pavilion, you know, the pickleball court. As soon as we break ground on anything as related to a particular feature, that feature is no longer, it cannot, you can't apply for grants anymore. So it's a, it's a little bit of, you know, game ship on it. But having the grants, having the matching fund, it makes our application much, much stronger, because these are constructions.
Okay. I think you've provided for us a really compelling presentation for us today. So thank you for all the work that's gone into this. I know that you're looking for a commitment from us.
I am.
As soon as possible, I don't think it's going to happen today, but I know you're looking for a commitment from us, and we, we definitely need to make a commitment on this. I know that you, you know, we've all expressed support for this project. I think we just need to sort through ourselves, just finalizing our ARPA process.
Okay. Can we get a rough timeline because of the grants that are coming up? Can we get a plan that?
Yeah. Realistically, I mean, I think we had planned that we were going to have this all wrapped up before April. And then I think, you know, several meetings, our focus has shifted. So, you know, this month is going to be a little challenging, we're not meeting next week, and we're not going to have a full board on the 25th, we won't have a full board again until May the 2nd. And so we're going to, you know, I can prioritize with the town manager, but we need to, you know, we can prioritize in May. But it, you know, realistically though, knowing the calendar, I think May 9th is probably the best-case scenario.
Okay. So, all right, you, your, last time I was here, I did, I don't know if you recall, in December, I said, you know, that is a cost of time.
Yes, it always is.
Yeah.
Which, which grants are no longer available as of May?
Yeah.
The big ones?
Well, the thing is not the grant available, it's the getting ready for applying for these grants, is having the documentation ready. So that is, the Parkland grant is usually, the, the application is due in July. So to say that, you know, we can put everything together within a month is kind of ambitious, so, you know, it really, if we are going for that, it really has to be early May for us to be able to put all our ducks in a row.
I just wanted to add something.
Okay.
I think Mr. Lonzo wants to say.
Yeah, well, I want to ask the town manager, if you, if I may through you, Mr. Chair, if this vote, at some point when we make vote, like we voted to commit ARPA funds for the vehicles, we did, officially for the purposes of, hypothetically, for the purposes of their grant, what is the activation date? As soon as we vote in the affirmative, is it immediately, there's no wait period, as soon as we vote, then it is committed?
The money is there. It's, we have the funds.
Okay. So I would venture to say that you should keep us very tight to your deadline, what those deadlines are, so that before you, you know, leave that box unchecked, so that's the last box of whether it's committed or whether you have matching grants or not, because that can be filled in at the last second, right?
Yeah, I think the advice.
The rest of the, the rest of the grant can be filled out.
And that's what I think we're both encouraging, is to, is to start that process, so that way, if, you know, when, and I think you, I think you can make a reasonable deduction that the board is going to allocate some money from ARPA for Marshall Park. We've all expressed interest in this. I think this has been the highest, you know, public interest of all the products that have come forward. There's a clear multi-generational impact. So I would encourage to start that process, make sure that you're moving forward in that, so that way, when this board acts, which I do expect to be in May, at the latest, realistically, because I mean, it doesn't make much sense. I know that we've, we've had other, you know, kind of pressing focuses over these last couple of months, but I mean, you know, we have money that we have to expend or we will lose. So it's not in our best interest to delay this too much more, and, and we really need to wrap this process up soon. So I would encourage, as Mr. Lonzo is also encouraging, if you can start that process, and that way, as a last step.
We have started that process. Right after town, special town meeting in the fall, she likes to task me with things, whether I like it or not. And I was tasked to go through some of the grant stuff. And we, we went through that, I sent a whole bunch of stuff over to her, and then it went, that same information went over to Wola, who we're working on now with, for the schematic design, because some of the answers that we need are going to have to come from that phase of this project. So we've already gotten the ball rolling, there's just a lot of, there's just a lot of pieces that end up having to get inputted. So we have started it, but a lot of the stuff is going to have to sort of get filled in as we go, and waiting to the last minute, although I'm really good at that, I would prefer not. Although I'm really good at that, I would prefer not to.
All right.
I did just wanna take the opportunity while we're on, being televised as well, that our next meeting is April nineteenth.
Yep.
And we, it is going to be, the beginning part of that meeting is a community meeting with WOLA. It's going to be via Zoom, a hundred percent via Zoom, not in person this time, and they're gonna sort of lay out what.
So we are starting the schematic phase and so we have the conceptual phase. And the schematic phase is kind of the first set of drawings. And they're gonna get the first input on how to start putting the drawings together. Any modifications that, you know, might need or add-ons, what have you. So then they go away, they make the first set of drawings and they come back one more time and give more feedback. So it's going, over the next month and a half, we're going to have at least two or three community meetings to take input for the process.
Yep. So the, the next, the first one with them will be April, Wednesday, April nineteenth, seven o'clock via Zoom.
Okay, so. Is WOLA the same company that, that pitched us for the?
Yes, but they did the first phase for the conceptual design.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
But they also, yes, bid on the thirty School Street.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was the same company.
Oh, they, they had applied for it.
Yes.
Right.
All right. So before you step away, I just wanna give anyone in the room that has any questions. I see that our Zoom attendance tonight is, is back to usual. Since the key players are here in person tonight.
We jump on Zoom when we can't get it on TV. So, you know.
Oh, that's the queue?
That's, if you ever see myself or my husband jump on, it's usually because we don't have good reception coming in.
Ah, that's good to know. Now I know.
Audio will cut out on us, so.
All right. So seeing a, seeing a Menard on it tells me there's something wrong with the pack.
Usually, not all. Sometimes it might be, but usually it's a heads up that, although usually I'll text Heather and be like, hey, what's up, you know?
Yeah. Hey, this is my first time seeing Mr. Passios in a, in a, in a bit. I usually see him on Zoom. So since retirement, apparently has been quite busy for him.
Hold on. Okay.
Do we have, so any questions in the room or in Zoom? No. All right. Well, thank you guys. As, as we noted, please keep us posted.
Yes.
And, you know, we will target, we can just put on the calendar, Heather, we'll, we'll talk more about it. But we're gonna target May the ninth.
Okay.
Do you wanna take this opportunity to talk about Earth Day?
Yes.
Thanks, Heather.
So we are having our Earth Day project and it's been very successful so far.
So excited.
I know. Last week, we had the Cub Scouts help worked on Veterans Park. We had another group, we had two groups working at the lane property, removing invasive plants. This coming weekend, we have more projects. We're gonna be cleaning up around the town pound. Then I think the week after is Wallace. So we have like at least another five projects. People wanna just jump in. That is information on the town website, town's Facebook page and also the Parks and Recreation page. And, you know, and even if you don't sign up, if you just show up, we, we accept any kind of help that we can get. But it's been great and I really wanna thank the community that are showing up and it's really great. So, you know, it takes a village.
I've been following the pictures. They're all, a lot of great work. I mean, the, the work at Veterans Park and at Marshall Park have been really good. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Oh, you, do you wanna adjourn your meeting?
Oh, yes, thank you. All right. Meeting's closed. Oh, in favor.
Good night.
All right. Thank you. Always good to see you guys. And this is such, such great energy from the two of you behind this project, really. It would not get to this point if it wasn't, not just the two of you, but you guys have been really vocal about it. But if it wasn't for the energy behind the Parks Commissioners, all of you working together, you know, this would not be able to move forward. So it is.
I agree.
It is. All right. So we're gonna go into our old business tonight. Just as a comment, looking at number two, although we put this on the agenda, update on our goals. We do have the town manager will be giving us her selfie valve over the course of the next week or so. So I don't think that there's a benefit to doing, to going through those goals tonight. And then we do have a town manager report, so, to the town manager for the town manager report. And if you want us, after that, just go straight into our capital project updates.
Certainly.
I didn't see the town manager.
There's nothing in the Google Drive because it's an interrout form, but I wanted to share some updates before another two weeks went by. So I'll start with existing vacancies. There is now one vacancy on the three-hundredth anniversary committee and there, we do have an applicant would be on the next meeting agenda. There's one vacancy on the Finance Committee, one associate vacancy on the Green Communities Committee, two vacancies on the Historical Commission, and I wanna get back to that after. The Open Space Committee, there's one member-at-large vacancy, one vacancy on the Personnel Committee, one associate vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Anyone interested can fill out application forms on the volunteer forms on the town website and submit them to the town manager's office. If you have any questions on these opportunities, please contact our office at nine seven eight, five eight two, four one three zero, extension one four four. So getting back to the Historical Commission, the way that bylaw reads, it's up to seven member positions and they've always operated at five. So they have contacted me about this because they, they don't want a seven-member person committee. They would, they operate well with the five members. So I think the best thing to do is to do a bylaw change to make it the five if it's gonna be that. Because at any point, it could be seven.
Yeah, well, we can't do it until special town meeting.
Right. But I just, that's what I wanna.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Share their concerns on that.
If you could please send the current bylaw around about how it's worded, I'm just wondering. I, I remember reviewing this many years ago, but it is certainly not at my fingertips anymore about why there was the potential for seven. Does, does it add into the, their, it doesn't change their quorum, does it? I mean, they still.
No, because our quorum is defined in the charter by the, what the current membership of the board is.
Not the defined membership.
Right.
Okay.
So they're, so they're coming in a little concerned then that they're, that we're.
That we're advertising for, for two vacancies when they, they're fine at five.
Oh, they currently have five.
They currently have five.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah. Okay, we should do that soon. That's, yeah. I thought, I really thought that they had three and, yeah. Because I don't think we've ever done that before. Two are optional. They're really not officially vacancies, I guess. They're optional vacancies, which would confuse most people, confuse and or bore most people.
Odd wording to me. It should be a definitive number.
Can we not advertise the other two positions?
Yeah, for the interim, I would take them off.
Yeah.
I can do that.
We've only ever appointed five people.
You could say they're optional vacancies and that would confuse the hell out of people and then we just get emails.
Yeah. I think we're opting not to fill the other two.
For employment opportunities for the town, there is currently an assistant to the sewer business manager, which is twenty-four hours a week, building commissioner, thirty-six hours a week, assistant town accountant, thirty-two hours a week, digital services staff librarian, which is twenty hours a week, library assistant, which is nineteen hours a week, police officer, which is forty hours a week, seasonal lifeguard, beach director, which is also seasonal, and PAC videographer, which is.
Facility position for Kit's position?
That's not yet advertised, not yet posted. So that's why it's not included. An update on our status of becoming age-friendly. So similar to the dementia-friendly, how we became a dementia-friendly community, we've been undergoing a process of similar types of group meetings. That included the Land Use Director, myself, the Superintendent, the Library Director, the Police Chief, the Council on Aging Director, obviously, and the Parks Commission Chair has been attending those meetings as well. We had worked with Monarch City Regional Planning Commission in the fall through one of their technical assistance grants. While that terminated at the end of December, there's still some additional work needed to be done to file with AARP to put our application in. So the Council on Aging Director and I have been working, will be picking up those pieces and trying to get that submitted. The Council on Aging Director will be working on the application form. I will be doing the letter of commitment that goes, gets submitted along with that. And just basically committing to things that we know we have on the horizon already. That our goal is to do the Marshall Park project and that's, you know, encompasses all ages of the community. We have a commitment to our seniors and we demonstrate that in different ways, like the senior tax relief program and things that we're currently doing, complete streets and all those things. So that's just enough.
Age-friendly is not targeted. It's the whole spectrum of age is what they're talking about, from, from youth to, to senior.
No, senior.
It's only senior? Okay. So that's what I thought. So age, so how does it different than what we, oh, okay.
Dementia-friendly.
Well, that was dementia-friendly. Obviously, that's a different category. That's pretty clear cut. Okay. Age-friendly, I'm not sure I understand, but, okay.
Making sure we're adapting our community so we're inclusive of our seniors.
Gotcha. Okay.
Update on the town website. I don't know if many people have been on the website lately, but Karen McCarthy, she's our new admin IT person. She's been working on, which was our goal in hiring the position, is to make our website more uniform, the pages. So she's gone through all of the department pages, really done a lot of work in making them look similar. The links were all over the place, so she really organized them already. Now she's moving on to the boards and commissions as well, so that is going well. She'll be picking up the meetings with Civic Plus, which is who we're moving to for our platform for our website. So there's gonna be all the, the design and everything that gets migrated over to that social.
Can, can she provide any, or can anybody provide any examples of communities in Massachusetts that use the new platform so I can look at?
Oh, gosh. There's more communities than not that use Civic Plus.
I mean, just if you pick out five, so I can look at them.
Yep. I can do that. So they have all different kind of.
I don't even need the links, just the towns. I mean, I'll look up the links myself, so. I just wanna see what the websites look like.
And she's also created a new Instagram account yesterday. So we now have Town of Lunenburg, MA is our Instagram account. So she'll be doing that.
TikTok cannot be far behind.
No TikTok. But our, our goal really is, you know, obviously, different age groups as well, use different social media platforms, creating more of a, a human aspect to all our town departments, maybe more photos of what the DPW is doing, you know, things around town.
Well, I will say that I think in today's day and age, as community newspaper readership declines or newspaper readership in general declines, there's gotta be less and, there's less and less touch points. That's traditional touch points. And so you have to use the new ones, otherwise people won't know what's going on. So it's really critical to have a social media website slash, you know, administrator that takes care of all this because it really needs to be up to date. Things turn stale faster than like, you know, than donuts left on the counter do. And, and nobody likes, nobody will go back to a site if it's stale and doesn't have good content. They won't ever go back to it. You really have to keep it going.
Yeah. And some people engage, so. It's an active job for sure.
Yeah. I think Karen will do a good job at getting that direction.
Yes.
She's also put us through the process of being verified with Google, which there's a whole process for that. So working on those analytics and, yeah.
Excellent.
So making some good progress.
People, yeah, search and hit and everything.
We do now, because she is also tuned into the analytics on our website. We get a lot of Canadian visitors to our website.
No, it's Nova Scotia.
Yes.
Which, by the way, if you're listening, a great place to visit, Lunenburg, Nova Scotia. Been there a couple times. Gorgeous.
All right. So an update, some, some updates regarding, related to facilities, grounds and parks. The Facilities Director has been working on getting quotes to replace the water heater, the public safety building that is leaking. That has recently come up, so that needs to be replaced right away. He will be proceeding with a contractor and that total project will be under ten thousand. The seniors and our patio project will be put out to bid starting tomorrow and bids will be due on May first. The backstop at Marshall Park was damaged due to the last snowstorm where there was a heavy, that heavy snow. And he's already had a, has a contractor in place, I think maybe installed already. And part of the repair will include a pulley system. So it'll be, like, be able to be taken down every season. That's been the real problem with that backstop netting is the end of the season getting it down because it takes a lift or even the end of the year last year, the ground was too soft for even anyone to go out there would ruin the fields. So this system should, you know, alleviate that in the future. The second floor, the building at McNally was demolished and there are some small minor repairs being made to the remaining structure. So that project is done. Thirty School Street, all the utilities have been disconnected. The hazardous pavement has been completed. And there were records that were still remaining in the building that the town clerk wanted to preserve. So the Facilities Director worked with a contractor and those records were removed and they're cleaning them and will be storing them at our location at TCP after. The, there was something that was raised today regarding the septic system by the Board of Health because the plan did not include removal of the septic system. And that just came up late in the day today.
Where is this for?
For Thirty School Street. That the Board of Health has flagged it to be removed before the demolition.
Why does it need to be removed?
Well, the Facilities Director, that's his first thing tomorrow, that he's gonna be speaking to the Board of Health tomorrow.
How long has it been vacant?
Fifteen.
I don't think, I mean, if I understand the whole septic idea, is there really anything in there? I don't, I'm, I'm missing something, you know?
I think the whole reason the board decided to preserve the septic system was maybe ultimately.
Future use.
Right, to be tied into if that property was ever a park or anything for bathroom facilities.
Yeah. So, no, I understand that, but I mean, but why, how is it a?
Hazard.
How is it a health hazard for, for a system that hasn't been used in fifteen years? Whatever is in there, my guess would be if it was functioning at the time is.
The bacteria have done their thing.
Nature, nature moves on, you know? We didn't have toxic children going there, so I don't understand.
So hopefully this gets resolved quickly because we're, we're on a good schedule right now with getting the building demolished. Yes. And the Parks Commission mentioned Sola and the other company associated with the schematic design for civil engineering is Meridian. They work with WOLA and that will get us through the schematic phase as mentioned. So they've started that. And just other meetings, the Finance Committee has a public hearing, a second public hearing in the budget on April twentieth at seven PM in Town Hall, which is also a hybrid meeting. Annual Town Meeting is Saturday, May sixth at nine AM at the Middle School, High School. And the Annual Town Election is Saturday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, seven oh five PM at TCP.
All right.
One other quick thing I just thought of. The Assistant Town Manager, Payroll Coordinator, Maya, and I have all been working on doing a benefit and health, health and benefit seminar for all town employees, which includes school employees as well. So that is going to be May ninth at the Middle School, High School cafeteria. So looking forward to that because I don't think the town has done one before.
All right. And I just wanna comment, thank you for volunteering to join the Select Board. I know Mr. Lonzo will be hosting the event.
Oh.
Mr. Franco and Select Woman Soroka and I and you will all be on a team, so part of it, so this is gonna be pretty exciting. I will be studying as well.
Be chopping my kids' brains.
I have no idea what they teach in elementary school anymore. So we're pretty excited. So thank you, Heather. I know you're gonna be on vacation.
Make sure I announce that at the closing of the public comment.
I know you're gonna be on vacation next week, so that's gonna be coming off and crazy week and then a Friday night with us.
I'm sure you can get a.
Looks like it's fun.
Are you smarter than a sixth grader study sheet? Are you smarter than a sixth grader study sheet?
Be surprised what pops up on Google, right?
Well, I'm glad to hear that the Select Board is gonna have a team, that is, that is excellent news.
Yes, I'm a great.
Or the town, the Select Board and Town Management will have a team.
Yeah, so, all right, and the snarky name I chose was the Executive Team.
Should've called it Executive Session. Still time.
All right, so going into old business, so we have our update on capital plan projects, um, starting with fiscal year twenty-one.
I will screen share this.
Uh, I don't know if it's helpful, Heather, this is like font six.
Try to zoom in, if it's not, I'll close it.
Yeah, it's kind of wide as well, so I don't, I don't know how this is gonna play out on the screen.
Yeah.
I don't think anyone can see that. Can you guys see that in the room?
Nope.
Okay.
It's not gonna stay in place, so.
Eric, yep.
Okay. So, uh, as a follow-up to, this has been a monthly item on old projects, the status of. So the highlighted yellow projects on this screen are all the projects that are tally up to the unexpendited capital amount being applied to the fiscal twenty-four capital plan. So those are all projects closing out. There are some remaining amounts, um, that there's a little bit of work that needs to be done around the fuel tanks. A little paving work that needs to be done, so the DPW has asked to retain that amount. The master plan that was recently awarded, that amount is fully committed towards the master plan award. The portable radio amount, um, is being retained for now. So is our policy with amounts within the same fiscal year, if a project goes over, we could use that balance towards another project. So we are going to be re-putting out to bed the carport reconfiguration project. We'll see, last time it was put out, it was during COVID, so we, um, prices were astronomical during that time. It came in at almost three hundred thousand. So we will just try again, see what the market is like now for that. If we need to apply any of that portable radio money into that, that's why it's being retained. The kitchen remodel project, the senior center, that's that amount, that project is on, is slated for the fall with Monty Tech. They didn't have any availability, they were fully booked this year for other projects, but they, we are on their schedule for the fall for the kitchen remodel project, that's senior center. The remodel project at the Ritter Building is complete, so that's the balance of that project. To the next one. So fiscal twenty-two capital projects. The highlighted projects are ones that are all complete and those amounts could go towards any expended amounts. A little bit, here.
Maybe not.
Yeah, that's probably the best I can do.
That's good.
The chiller project, that, um, minus about twelve hundred dollars, that project is complete as well. So that balance can go towards other projects. The Flat Hill Culvert Construction Project, that is, right now, we're working on all the easements with those abutting property owners. And as soon as those are, uh, signed off on, that can be put out to bed. So those specifications have been complete by our engineer. The Ritter ADA Ramp Construction Project, uh, related to also the Ritter Envelope Repair Project, the window project, as everyone knows it. The facilities director has secured an architect for that project. The drawings are expected to be complete by the end of the month. Um, there's still also all the, the specifications that need to be updated as part of that, but the drawings should be done by the end of the month. The Town Hall Repair Project, um, that we received one bid on February twenty-third, approximately three hundred thousand for all the work for that project, so that is on hold and will be reassessed by the facilities director on how to move forward. The Public Safety Carpet Project, that will be going out to bed shortly. The facilities director has secured an architect for that project as well.
He has no carpet tiles this time?
Yes. So that is all the projects for fiscal twenty-two in their status, any questions?
No.
And lastly, fiscal twenty-three. We have the Page Street Culvert Construction Project, that, um, is close to being complete as far as the specifications. The DPW Director has, um, been going back and forth with McCarty Engineering on those specifications, so that's getting closer. The Public Safety Building Engineering Design Project, the facilities director still needs to assess whether that's needed. That was the, um, assessment of the last facilities director, that it wasn't needed. So, like, his input as well, before we abandon that. The Senior Center HVAC upgrades, the facilities director will need to work on, um, putting that. But as hopefully noted, he's doing, he's been getting a lot done.
Yes, it's very obvious, yeah.
So I have a lot of faith that all these will get done in short order. The Master Plan Project, that contract was ordered, the, the big balance remaining is ninety dollars.
I did laugh at that, I'm like, a hundred and ten thousand dollars and they have ninety dollars, like, why?
Yes. The two-way radio system for the DPW that was ordered and the estimated delivery is April twenty-three, so it should be anytime now. K-nine replacement, no update from last time, talked about this, that Officer Jack Wagner is the new canine handler. And they're moving forward with that.
If we're gonna, you know, one, I think I had mentioned last time we brought this up as well, that there seems to be a change in the type of dog that is being used. And, uh, I did ask if we can get more information on that, certainly not a rush, but before they move forward procuring it, I know I had referenced that the image they had provided at the meeting was of Jerry the German Shepherd, um, which kind of tells everyone drug dogged. And, and I, I think I've, um, my understanding is that that's not the direction we're going in, that there's a new kind of, so it would be helpful to get clarity on that.
Okay. The police marked Ford Hybrid Cruiser, that is in, and that's, um, being outfitted. The Town Hall Repair is the other project that needs specifications to be drawn up by an architect. The Flat Hill Road Drainage Study, we have a meeting on the twenty-fifth with all the stakeholders in that project. And so discuss possible next steps after that meeting. The one-ton dump for the schools, that was ordered and, um, delivered. The records retention, I'm working on RFP. The utility tractor rotary mower combo that was ordered in September. And the estimated delivery was originally May-June timeframe, that was moved to April-May timeframe. I know, opposite of what we hadn't used to been hearing. Marshall Park Survey, that project is complete. And those funds will be used towards, um, the work that Sola and Meridian will do, so those are committed. The Senior Center Roof Replacement, that will need specification, so the facilities director, that's on his list of projects. The one-ton dump truck with plow was ordered and delivered, um, in April. The mower for the schools was ordered, I don't know the status if that was delivered yet, so I will follow up with the schools. The Brooks House, the facilities director will need to assess that project as well for the foundation work. The police marked Ford F-one-fifty, um, I was, happened to be at the Public Safety Building the day it was delivered, so I got to see it firsthand, and Sergeant Tashi is working on the outfitting for that vehicle. The old primary hazardous materials abatement project, that, as you know, was awarded to Costello dismantling, and that's expected to be done by no later than May eighth. The Senior Center, the generator, the facilities director had a electrical engineer come in, and that will be going out to bed shortly as well. And the ADA Patio I gave an update on tonight, and those bids are due May first. And the AC at the classrooms for the primary school, that, um, you should be receiving correspondence from the schools on that. They would like to proceed with kind of like an alteration of that original plan.
Okay, I'm just, uh, this, I guess we should entertain, let's, before I jump the gun, we should see what the alteration is. If it's gonna be altered so much that it really doesn't fit this category, I would probably argue that it should be go back to the Capital Planning Committee, because we approved it as such, and to get the money appropriated and re-appropriated, if it is, if it is substantially different, could raise objections, I just raised the possibility, I haven't seen the plan, but on its face, I just want to say that, that could happen.
Okay.
I think, um, if you watch, it was probably at the last meeting, so when they did their budget presentation, they discussed the status of that project, um, they discussed like the, the specifics.
Oh, the last school committee meeting?
No, well, that too, I think that was discussed at that meeting as well, this, uh, where is that tomorrow? I'll have to look at their agendas, but finance, it was discussed at one of their.
Wasn't last week's meeting?
The one, the last, the one, the last meeting that the school committee went to, or the superintendent, it had to be their budget, you know?
Okay, I'll have to look, okay.
Okay. All right, any other questions related to the capital plan to the town manager?
No, I thank you for a full recap.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, um, do we have anything related to the budget capital plan, warrant articles or consent calendar yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, today I sent out an update we received, I thought we were gonna escape a town meeting without a prior year expense.
Yes.
And we received an invoice today that was from last fiscal year. It's for our, uh, due membership for being part of the, uh, North Central or Central Mass Regional Stormwater Coalition. And that's an amount of four thousand dollars we pay a year to be part of that coalition and intermissible agreement with other communities. And that would come out of free cash, so it would increase the amount of free cash that we're using towards the, uh, budget, which includes, uh, the overlay, the capital plan, uh, stabilization, special purpose stabilization, OPEB, and that prior year expense, and the historical commission article as well.
Okay.
And the consent calendar, I did put something.
Does that change our recommendation, do we make a recommendation?
You deferred that one, so.
Okay, that's why we deferred, okay.
But I think you, I mean.
We had a premonition.
Up to the board, but you could take a vote at one of your future meetings and then announce your vote at town meeting.
Yep.
Okay, consent calendar, I have put together a list of what I think are non-controversial articles. So Article One, we typically include in the consent calendar, but this year, the Finance Committee didn't submit a report in the town meeting booklet. They discussed that their report would go into the annual report, but the annual report is a one-year delay. So, um, the thought I had today was maybe they could discuss, um, their report under Article One, which we typically just pass over.
Okay, so as a side, as a side commentary, I do want to report, you know, not that people go back and read these and, and take a lot of stock in them, but they do provide some kind of historical guidance about what happened in the committee. And I, I think for, I'm a little bit concerned and disappointed that the Finance Committee didn't have one to write on, you know, a year like such. And if things were in flux or there was some, you know, uncertainty, they certainly could have written about that. It just gives help, it, it looks, it looks incomplete and it looks like the work of the committee was not finished in order to do the report. And I know that's not true, I know they've been working very hard, I just wish they had gotten a report in, because some people look at that as a way of gauging for the present how things are going, but if they look back in years about how things went. So they provide a historical reference that I think is invaluable, and I'm just sorry they didn't complete one. Sorry for that.
No, no, I, I concur, thank you.
The other articles that I am recommending to put in the consent calendar are Article Two, which is the revolving funds article, Article Three, which is the prior year expense, as long as, um, both finance and Select Board, I think that's, um, that's not an issue. Article Ten, which is the stabilization fund article, Article Eleven, which is the special purpose stabilization fund article, Article Twelve, which is the OPEB article, which is both for the town and sewer OPEB deposits. Article Fifteen, which is the sewer capital reserve stabilization. Article Sixteen, which is the solid waste disposal program enterprise. Seventeen, which is the water enterprise. Eighteen, which is public access enterprise. Nineteen is the cemetery lots, sale of cemetery lots account for ten thousand and twenty, which is this historical commission's article for the historic homes survey.
Wow.
I'm not.
I like, I like a healthy consent calendar, this could be good.
So I would ask the board if you generally can consent to the consent calendar, because the Finance Committee is meeting next week, that's their public hearing, and it would be good, um, going, um, as long as we're all on the same page, um, with all the articles to include, because we will include that as part of the motions, which I'm working on this week. And we have a meeting, our pre-town meeting is the week of April twenty-fourth.
Insofar as the consent calendar is designed to be non-controversial articles, I would say I don't see anything on this of controversy.
I concur, so we're taking out Article One, keeping the rest of them in here. I don't think we need to pull them this summer, or unless you're looking for a vote.
Straw pool.
Yeah, I, I, it seems that we're all.
Whichever, yeah.
I mean, I would move to put the senior tax.
I think that's gonna have to be presented to them. All right, we, we consent.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Are we still doing our executive session tonight? Do we have any?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so later this evening, we do have an executive session, um, which I will provide that motion here in a moment. So upcoming meeting schedule, we will be meeting on, we are not meeting next week. Uh, we will be meeting again on April the twenty-fifth, uh, Mr. Alonso, I'll be looking for you to chair that meeting. Uh, we'll be meeting on May the twen, May the second, uh, May the ninth, May the sixteenth, um, and May the twenty-third. We will have our annual town meeting on Saturday, May the sixth, and then we have annual town elections on Saturday, May the twentieth. Do we have any public comments this evening from the town manager?
Yes, I was able to bring up what I had prepared for public comment for tonight. So the goal of my public comment tonight is that I hope it will clear up some misinformation that has been mentioned pu, both publicly and what I have been told. Comments that have been made that I put a gag order on employees and that this was construed as I, I'm either not being helpful or not allowing employees to do their job or that I was covering up something. I believe this stems from an email that I sent back on Thursday, January nineteenth, after the January seventeenth meeting held on the tax.
after the January seventeenth meeting held on the tax assessment issue at the Middle School High School. I am aware that email that I sent to town employees was circulated to people who are not town employees. I will read from that email for the rest of the public who has not seen it. Good afternoon. At the Select Board's meeting on January seventeenth, the Board addressed concerns related to the tax assessments at length, and ultimately voted to proceed with an inquiry into an investigation of the matter pursuant to Section three dash two, Section E, of the Town Charter. This email was to notify employees that the town is not presently in a position to comment substantially due to the pending investigation. Employees are to direct all questions to the Chairman of the Select Board, Michael Ray Jeffries, and I, and are not to comment on the matter. The town, through the Select Board, will make every effort to share new information with the public as it becomes available. Sincerely, Heather. This was not a gag order for employees not to continue to do their jobs, but it was intended to notify employees that there was an investigation into this matter, and communications about the investigation would be channeled through the principal investigator, Chairman Jeffries, and myself. Just to add some more context to the situation at that time, in the days following the January seventeenth meeting, we had the media calling our offices, approaching employees outside of Town Hall, including employees that didn't even work in the assessor's office. This was in no way intended that employees could not continue to do their jobs. I also want to clear up the misinformation that I directed the Board of Assessors, that they could not handle the abatements. I had no such conversations with the assessors, individually or collectively. It has been known early on that due to the number of abatement applications, expected that we would need to hire an outside consultant to conduct inspections and provide recommendations on abatement applications. This was discussed publicly at Select Board meetings, the Board voted publicly to allocate funding from ARPA towards the investigation, which included the cost to hire this consultant. Has also been stated publicly that requests for proposals were sent out once with no response, and it was re-advertised. This was all done to support the Board of Assessors in getting through the over four hundred abatement applications. I never stated nor insinuated or had a conversation with any of the assessors or staff that the assessors could not handle abatements. I've also said publicly that I have no jurisdiction over the Board of Assessors, nor does the principal assessor, nor does the Select Board. They are an elected body accountable to the voters. As I stated at the January tenth meeting, I am sympathetic to the affected taxpayers, and that I would help guide taxpayers through the process by relaying important information and seeking answers to your questions. To say this has been a difficult last three months is an understatement. A constant flow of foot traffic, emails, phone calls, and follow-up was required of the assessor's office, especially during those first few weeks. Our office was inundated with emails, various public records requests, countless hours have been spent assisting with the investigation, working with the relevant staff that is constantly being asked to provide answers to questions, all of this in addition to the normal, daily, weekly, annual responsibilities. My staff and I understand the urgency of the situation and individual situations. I ask the public to understand that we want to provide accurate, good information to questions, and any important updates that may need to be addressed. This, this may not meet the expectations that information should be immediately available. It takes staff time and other competing priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any public comments this evening from the public? Do we have any public comments from the Board?
I just have one, because earlier in the meeting, you reminded me, so I should say that, uh, on April, Friday, April twenty-eighth, at the Lunenburg High School Middle School Auditorium, it will be the Ninth Annual Are You Smarter Than a Sixth Grader Fundraiser from the Boys and Girls Club of Lunenburg. I am absolutely thrilled to be back as host for this for the ninth year. In this role, you get to say you're thrilled a lot, but sometimes you actually get to mean it, and I really mean it in this time, it's really a lot of fun. If you have not been there, or if you've not participated, I really encourage you to come down, it's a really fun event, it's for a great cause, they do some great fundraising, and you get to meet all the people, uh, who worked there, or many people who worked there, and their stories, and the, and the, the, their members and their families who really are affected in such a positive way, uh, by the Boys and Girls Club of Lunenburg. So I urge people to, uh, form a team, I don't know if they have all sixteen teams already, but if you are interested, look at the Boys and Girls Club of Lunenburg's website or their Facebook page, you can contact them, I know they're actively fundraising for the event as well, but most importantly, come out and support the community all, of all ages, you talk about an age, uh, one that reaches across from youth to seniors, we have people of all ages there, and, uh, and it really is a fun evening, so I hope people come out, and I will announce this, uh, every meeting we have until the date. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Any other Board comments this evening?
I have none.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna move to enter into executive session and enter back into open session.
Exit.
Um, excuse me, and to exit, um, hold on.
It should say. An exit from executive session.
Okay. How to make my notes here. All right, I moved to enter into executive session and to exit from executive session,
After adjourning executive session.
After adjourning the executive session, thank you. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty, Section Twenty-one, Paragraph Three, it is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's bargaining position, and I, as Chair, so declare, and this is related to the Fire Union. Is there a second?
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Jeffries, one, one moment, uh.
Pancake breakfast?
Second that, I need to make a public announcement, I just got a reminder.
Telling me, telling me.
Sorry, my, my little, uh.
We'll do the motion again anyway.
There's a pancake breakfast tomorrow, okay? At the Eagle House, eight to ten usually those are, eight to ten, yes, okay.
All right, pancake breakfast tomorrow, thank you, Lou.
I sec- I second your most, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, any additional discussion, uh, this is a roll call vote. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Alonso?
Aye.
And an aye for myself, so all those at home, thank you for joining with us this evening again, we will not be meeting next week, uh, enjoy the vacation week and the holiday, and we will see you here, uh, next on, uh, my birthday, when I won't be here, on the twenty-fifth.